Bill, you want to go ahead?
The first item is a change order for the paving program. And the change order amount is one hundred and sixty-five thousand, two hundred and twenty-eight dollars. And just...
How much?
One hundred and sixty-five thousand, two hundred and twenty-eight dollars. And that's almost completely due to the increase in the price of oil because asphalt is indexed on that. And throughout the course of the project, oil kept going up, so...
Any questions?
I have one, Mr. Jordan, and that is, with this amount, Bill, will that complete this year's funding for that?
No, he's still got some striking.
But the paving is done. The striping is like kind of the finishing touch?
And then when the striping is completed, you know, he'll have to attach some speed cushions. And I think they were supposed to be in this week, later this... They're supposed to be in this week, I believe, to finish up. And I can't guarantee it because they... Yes? That was the state.
That was the state.
Raise that level of you. Go on to the second issue.
Yes, go ahead.
Second item is a resolution to approve a contract with TTL to provide surveying, civil engineering, construction services, inspection, materials testing for a storm sewer that is, you know, that is under the Bentley Chevrolet Cadillac facility. And, you know, I've been through that storm sewer system and I've talked to the Public Works Committee about it. And, you know, it needs to be repaired before too much longer. And, you know, when you've got holes coming up in a pipe, you need to make sure it's repaired, so... And the cost for this, and this is the engineering, it is not, it's not the construction. It's fifty-nine thousand, nine hundred and thirty dollars. And it's over five hundred feet of pipe.
Let's go back to change order. We need to approve that. I hear motion. Same motion for approval by Bill, by Blake, all of them. Six zero. Go ahead.
Well, that's all on the Bentley Chevrolet. Was that approved?
Yeah. That was, that one, change order, that was a contract.
Okay, yeah, you will approve it tonight. Okay, sorry about that. The next item is a resolution to approve a contract with Silver Group to provide professional services for the intersection of Matthew Street and Wright Drive, that area. That's about a thirty-eight acre watershed, and all that water funnels through one property. And so, the problem is, we can't just, you know, go in there and do anything without doing the analysis of it because the problem right downstream from them, the people right downstream from them have a problem with drainage, too. Or they've had one in the past, and we think we fixed their problem. So that's one reason that we're doing this.
That's also to discuss this on the works.
It should be on this, like this contract with TTL for the pipe. Do you have to wait, or can you, on an emergency, go in and approve that?
Well...
I mean, I've...
Whenever, okay, whenever, here's the best way I can answer it. When holes are in the bottom of the pipe, the inward of the pipe, you know, that's a sign that you've got distress and you need to do something about it. You know, I've been down in that pipe several times, and Paul Harrelson has also been down there with me. But I would tell you that I think the most practical thing to do is, and I think we've got time to get an engineering firm in here to look at it, to come up with the optimal design for putting in a guideline. You know, if at all possible, you know, I don't want to just react and put in something we know will, you know, will work but might not be hydraulically efficient, so... So that's why we're getting the engineer on board.
I think it makes sense. You can do it earlier, saves money and safety.
Yeah.
But that makes sense.
The next item is a contract with White Leonard Collins and Associates for topographic surveying and civil engineering services to address the drainage issue along the line.
Any questions? Thank you, Bill. We go to Bill, too.
Good afternoon. The first item we have is an item for, to submit a contract, I mean, an invoice for Irons Electric. They repaired fifteen lights at the harbor, and the amount is three thousand, twenty-three dollars and forty cents. Next is, would enter to a contract with Big Heavy Welding for the purpose of fabricating, painting, and installing four guard posts for stair handrails at the sports complex. This includes labor and materials necessary to complete the job. The total amount is sixteen hundred dollars and comes with budgeted funds. That's some stairs the street department did for us going down to one of the ball fields. We're about to enter into a contract with Langston Service Group for furnishing, installing a new ring, seven-and-a-half ton condenser unit, and that includes removal and re-insulation of the surrounding fence at Broadway. The work includes material, labor, and wiring. The total amount is nine thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars, and that will come with budgeted funds. We did get three different prices. Next is to enter into a contract with Sutton Fence to provide and install a twenty-four inch cantilever gate at the sports complex. This will be labor and material to complete the job. The amount is six thousand, two hundred dollars.
Where will that be at this point?
We're doing another entrance-exit off to Gunnerford Road, and so we're having to cut the fence, so this will be the, a gate put up in its place. Hopefully relieve some of the traffic.
Will that be left and right, or is that one of those just right? That's left out?
Left out.
Okay.
Yeah, they're gonna put, we met with the county, that being a county road, the county was fine. Eric Hill was great with that. He is, and he said if we would provide the signs, they would put them up for us. The street department did the signs for us, and the county's gonna put them up. So that'll be direct to, to there and leaving there as well.
We made a roundabout just down the road to turn around and come back.
I'll be fine. I'll be good, Bill. The next is submit payment for an invoice, and this work was completed by Jabco Inc., Master Pools. They removed a pool cover, replaced the main pool pump and motor, and transport motor for the repairs, chlorine tablets, and new pump lid, and O-ring at the Handy Rec Pool. And this work was labor and material. The amount was seventeen hundred, fifteen dollars and forty-one cents. All right. Thank y'all very much.
Thank you, Bill.
Yeah.
I have a couple of problems with the invoice for Cheryl.
Yeah, Cheryl had a, it's item K, and consented general resolution proof payment of invoice from Barnet Plumbing, an amount of six thousand dollars, sponsored by Cheryl. What this was is, actually, it's installation of two toilets at the animal control, now services building. What this was, the dog waste that was coming out of there, they were literally putting that in garbage bags and hauling that off and put it in the dumpsters. This now is actually, I guess, high-grade commercial toilet where you can actually put the dog waste and that down these toilets, and it's gonna save them wear and tear employees walking back and forth across to the dumpsters and garbage bags and everything else, but... And I, I'm gonna put a shout-out to Mike Doyle, because he, Mike told me about this a couple of years ago, and then I got with, I think Keith Abernathy down at Tallman, and he said, yeah, these things actually exist. And so anyway, Cheryl got these, I think they made it, let me just say this, they, they got some quotes on it, and then there was a mix-up as far as if they were told to go ahead or not. Anyway, somebody told them to go ahead, or they thought that, anyway, they put them in, so they're installed, and they are already using them, so that's why this is...
Are they low enough that...
I didn't ask for a history. I know, I'm tired of everybody doing these long drawings out of statements.
Are they, are they low enough that the dogs and cats can get on it?
Yeah, they can go in there. There's little foot pedal for them to hit the flusher and everything, yeah.
But they've been installed with their ease?
Yes.
And no problems?
Yes.
So dogs and cats live together?
They do. In peace.
In peace.
Where is Mike?
There he is.
Yeah. He got a toll... Yeah, Mike, yeah. Give us what we need.
It's okay to hold off on the shout-outs.
Okay.
That will save you some time. I've got a couple items. One of them is on the work session agenda, one of them is a change order, and the other one is a emergency, emergency gas line replacement, which is item L on the consent agenda. Ben was able to, with the timing and all, get this out on a fast bid process rather than just doing it like we've been doing it where we don't have time on emergency, because right now, it's hard to get materials, so they gotta get them up as soon as possible. But it's to replace a gas line in the three and four hundred blocks of North Fulton Street. They found several leaks there. One of them was considered a grade-one leak, which they got fixed. But they've got some minor leaks on that line that they've been working on, plus it seems to be developing more, so this line just definitely needs to be replaced. And we got a bid from TJ Construction Company on the twenty-sixth of April in the amount of seventy-nine thousand, nine hundred dollars to do this project for us. It'd be directionally board.
What length is that?
I don't know what the length is.
This is three hundred, four hundred blocks, so it's just about one block long.
It's gonna be between Peachtree and Huntsville Road.
Okay.
On those street, on North Fulton.
I was about to drive over there nine, flicking a bit, and see what...
No, it would be a good idea. It should be okay right now, but let's not take my chances. The next was a change order. This is on the Huntsville Road project, which has been going on for some time and just about, well, they're actually on Cox Creek now, but they went down Huntsville Road. The change order's actually, and some quantities of materials, it's reducing by twenty-six thousand, five hundred and ninety-seven dollars on ten-inch welded steel gas main, but it's increasing twenty-five hundred feet on six-inch welded steel gas main. Basically, the difference was almost a war. It got down to thirty-six hundred and forty-nine dollars and fifty-five cents more between the swap of the two. They determined they needed more six and less ten.
They left that in good shape, too. It looked as good as before they got there.
TJ does a very good job. That's the reason you really like when they get a bid.
Who's TJ?
TJ Construction Company.
I hear motion will approve the change.
Motion. Second motion, I'm saying my bid will fall in favor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, I have two items, and I have consent agenda M, which is agreement with TBA. I spoke with you all, the utilities could be about this a couple of weeks ago, but TBA has a program, an electric vehicle fast charging program, and it's kind of like a grant with them that they will fund up to eighty percent of a hundred and fifty thousand dollar project for a DC fast charger. And so, we would like to sign up for this program, take advantage of that, to put the first DC fast charger in the Lauderdale County City Forest.
What does one cost?
One, one, just the charger itself costs about eighty thousand dollars, but they're also covering the engineering fees behind it, any fees that we have to construct it, or any, they're covering the warranty just fees.
We basically do one charger somewhere. Where is that, y'all know?
We're looking at the Shell Station on Marsh Boulevard. They want it somewhere where whoever's charging, because it takes about thirty minutes to charge your vehicle, depending on what size vehicle you have, so they want somewhere that there's food available, restroom available, and it's kind of centrally located and kind of on the corridor that people are driving through anyway, so... That's where we're initially thinking. It may not end up there, but that's what we're initially thinking. They'll approve that location.
So we would, they would pay eighty percent of all those costs?
Of all those costs. So, and like, the total cost of the job can be at a hundred and fifty, and then we cover the other twenty percent, but we're actually gonna apply for a grant through a DECA. They said a DECA really liked the TBA program, where they covered the twenty percent, and TBA covered the eighty percent. So we're hoping we'll get that, but we're not guaranteed that, so...
And is it Cheryl right by, across the plane of bidding?
No, it's the Shell right here by Jack's. Mm-hmm. Yes, they, he actually has called and offered that to us in the past, and that he would be willing to, because we would take up four parking places and, you know, kind of impede on his property, but he volunteered to do it for us, so we thought we would, you know, that would be our first initial try of where to locate it.
That's a busy location.
It is. Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Glendale?
Yes, at Glendale, yes. Yes. So is that anything else? Questions?
When you, when you want this to be installed?
Well, we first have to get all the location, everything approved through TBA, and then as soon as we get everything approved, we're probably looking a month, a month and a half before we get all that approval done, and then we'll have to order the charger, and the charger takes about six, nine months to get in, so they're not readily available, imagine that. So we're probably looking around a year for it to actually be installed.
Would we still be the first at that point?
I would think so. I don't know that anybody's gonna voluntarily do that on their own, so...
What about the parking deck?
Well, the parking deck, we're putting regular level-two chargers in. We're not gonna put a DC fast charger in the parking deck, because they won't allow it to go in anywhere that's paid parking, so it has to be where there's free parking. But the level-two chargers, which, you know, if you use a level-two charger depending on the size of your vehicle, you're looking about eight to ten hours to charge a full charge, but that's gonna be more for people that are working downtown and want to leave their car charged during the day while they're at work. And that's what's going in the parking deck, the new parking deck. Item on the consent agenda N is a contract with Bradley A-Rent Volt-Cummins LP. They are a group that we are looking at getting a contract with to redo our pole attachment agreements. We currently have pole attachment agreements with all the cable companies, AT&amp;T in the county, and we are looking at kind of, we haven't redone our contracts in probably twenty-five years, so we're looking at updating them and updating kind of their responsibilities for the person that's attaching, and charging them some engineering fees, because it's taking a full-time employee to keep up with the pole attachments right now, so we're gonna try to recruit a little of that with some fees that we're gonna charge them upfront for each group of a hundred that they're wanting to attach to, so they're gonna help us with all that wording.
What, what would be the cost to attach?
We're gonna get, they, they said they would look at other utilities our size, and they would make it kind of comfortable to other utilities our size. So I can't tell you that price until they start digging into it, and they said they would, you know, get us some prices, and we would work through them, but I'll let y'all know when we get it. Anything else?
What about, attachments are already replaced, and we all go up on the auto.
No, so the attachment price per attachment is set by TBA. So this is just the, so when someone applies to attach to our pole, Comcast and Charter and JTM are attaching right down the eastern of the county, and they're sending us sometimes five hundred at a time, and all three of the, you know, is keeping, like I said, one person, full-time employee, and busy working on their attachments. We have to go out, check them, make sure that they have the space that they need, and make sure that the pole's not undersized for it and so forth, and so this is the, this is like an engineering fee when they apply for their pole attachments, that we're gonna start charging them in order to go and check for them. But the cost to attach to a pole is regulated by TBA. We don't set that. TBA sets that.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I have OPQR and S on the consent agenda and A on the regular agenda. Before I start, I want to be sure everybody received my text last night, just to update you about the grants the county commission got for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. There are fourteen volunteer fire departments in five stations here in the city. I certainly want to thank the commission for including us in there, the ZO, the ZO automated CPR device, and there's some, it was at the museum where they presented it last night, and several folks were showing them how they'd be used. It's certainly a very impressive device. It allows, let's say, you have a family member who goes in cardiac arrest, they can put you on the board, and it's, they can actually move you while the AED is working. They can move you on a gurney straight to the, to the ambulance, so it's a, it's a device that the fire department had been looking for, and I think the devices were about thirteen thousand dollars apiece, so we're thankful for that. First item I have is item O. It's a resolution to approve agreement for project help between the city and Shoals Dream Center. I've been communicating for the last couple of months with Cindy Young down at the help center. Since over the last forty years, the city of Florence has allowed citizens to add an additional amount, a dollar or more, on their utilities bill that would be, would go to the help center, and it's been called Project Help, and those dollars have gone there to help citizens who are having trouble with their utility bills. Because of the number of volunteers, the help center has decided they would like to turn this effort, Project Help, over to the Shoals Dream Center to operate for them at least until the end of the year, until they decide if they can take it back on. So the document that we're asking you to approve tonight, Mr. Musgrove took the original document, which goes back to nineteen eighty-three, and we're not sure who wrote that document, it was back during the term of Mr. Bill Batson, and he has altered that, and once you approve this, their leader will sign it, and I will sign it, and they will move forward, and I will have the check. They get it, they get a check once a month, depending on, you know, what's collected, so there's no, there's no city money. It's all donor money that goes to them monthly.
Do you have an estimated figure of just how much of that's...
All right, check, check that I'll give them tomorrow is about thirty-nine hundred dollars. It's between forty and fifty thousand dollars that it's donated every year, and the help center actually adds additional funds from their sources to help, and anybody can get a hundred dollars a year, and they have to, you know, provide certain bills and that kind of thing. And it's, it's certainly been a well-received program, and I'm very proud of it.
So this, this will be through the end of the year?
At least through the end of the year, and...
It could go back to the help center or maybe...
It could go back, and it would do, they have to come back to you with a different, you know, a different agreement, but Shoals Dream Center and their board agreed to do this, so I feel comfortable with that. Any other questions?
Plus, it could have been more than a dollar at one time.
It's a dollar or more, yeah.
Did I understand you correctly, Mayor, that it's a person that not get more than a hundred dollars a year? One individual?
That's correct.
And then how are those, well, this is not city money, it's donations?
That's right. And they actually get a voucher, so, so there's no cash given to anyone if it's a voucher system, and that's done, you know, on a daily basis, so there's some paperwork involved, but, you know, Sandy Freedom and Mark Lovejoy, and their departments handle it very efficiently. Any other questions? If not, the, the next one is item P. It's a resolution to approve agreement with RMB Marine Services. And it's for four thousand dollars, and that's for the tugboat services for the Spirit of Freedom Celebration. Q is actually the barge for three thousand dollars from Douglas Marine. And then R is a resolution to approve a contract with Sandy River Media Group at an amount of twenty thousand dollars, ten from my budget, ten from the council budget for the Spirit of Freedom Celebration fireworks. So I'd just like to thank Mike itself and his group, along with Tommy Glasgow at TNT. It's been very, very helpful. I appreciate their efforts as well.
Is there a reason they moved that to the first instead of the fourth?
Issue-wise, getting the technicians to be able to do it. They've been working on it a while, and, you know, after COVID, I think, I think some things have changed, and that was, you know, Tommy said, this is what we need to do, and I trust Tommy Glasgow, so... What we've tried to do, and our whole intent is, there's an event. I think you should have gotten the, the press release. There's an event on Thursday night, which is, which is patriotic related at Lewis Field for kids. Then we'll have First Fridays, talk with Timothy Wakefield, and they're all on board there. And then, still got some things to roll out about who the headliner is, so I like to say stay tuned. I think we're gonna be pleased with, you know, what's gonna be there. And basically, a kickoff to the Independence Day holiday.
Mayor, how much is the tugboat service?
A tugboat was four thousand dollars, and the barge was three thousand dollars.
Are we buying it or just renting it for one day?
We're just renting it. Do you have a place that we can park that tugboat at your house?
Is the twenty thousand the total cost of the fireworks, or is that just our portion?
That's our portion. They're gonna, they're gonna do additional, and they're out, you know, they're raising some funds for the additional back end. And in fact, TNT's agreed to either give them some money toward the event or additional fireworks, so that has not been worked out. Any questions? So, the next one is item S. It's a contract with the Shoals Chamber of Commerce in about twenty-five hundred dollars to operate and keep the Shoals beautiful program. Any questions? Sir?
It's a good program, blood of pride, I think.
Any questions? If not, the last item that I have is on the regular agenda, and that's item A, and it's the broadband application, and I think everyone's aware that because this did not gain immediate consideration at the last meeting, this will be an up-and-down vote tonight, and I've been very respectful of each one of you. I, I'm very supportive of this project and think we need to be a part of it, but I will defer to each one of you to do what you feel like is the right thing to do. I feel like, as a city, we need to be, work, trying to work together. How this will look down the road, and all the answers that we still have, I'm not sure of, but I certainly think the technology highway is something... sure of, but I certainly think the technology highway is something we've gotten to explore, and we did, we're better working together than several. Thank you.
See, Bob, you, uh, Billy, you gonna do that? With Church of Christ?
No. Uh, I just have one item on the agenda, and it's for the Park and Recreation Department. The, it's a real estate sales agreement, it's on the regular agenda, with Magnolia Church of Christ to purchase approximately eight point, I think it's eight point three acres on Vulcan Avenue, down close to the, where the road ends, if you've ever been down there, but at any rate, it's, it's, it's the closest point, it, it's, it's very convenient to the New River Heritage Trail, and so the Park and Recreation Department is interested in buying this property to build a maintenance, I don't know, I guess it'll be a building, but, but mainly to store mowers and things like, equipment to take care of the, of the River Heritage Trail, and the purchase price is one seventy-five, a hundred and seventy-five thousand.
That was the appraised price?
That's the price that they offered to sell it for.
That command of River Heritage, especially, it's close, and so, very well deemed, that doesn't count the building, that's the property, right?
There, there is no building, right, it's just a vacant piece of property. Like I said, I think it's eight point three acres, and of course, they don't need, I mean, I, Bill Jordan and Steve Easton are the ones who have been coordinating this, I don't think they need but maybe an acre, and so the rest, the city can possibly resell if, if, we can find a buyer, or, or maybe have another use for it, but, but anyway, that, it might, I think the church has already approved, not this contract, but the, the church has already approved the purchase price, so.
Any other questions, Billy?
Thank you. Thank you. Bob? I have item A under general business, a resolution to alcohol beverage license application for the operation of a full-menu restaurant with on-premise liquor, beer, and wine by J. Hat LLC. New business is Voodoo Wing Company, located at three-ten Cypress Mill Road Farms, sponsored by me, and this is out by the new building there across from KFC, if you go out Pine Street.
Yep.
Out there.
Yep. Any other questions?
If not, I'm gonna break off. Mr. Jordan, we need to add, add an item tonight, and it was a contract with WPI, Wilson Properties Incorporated, that are putting a new, new roof on the bathhouse at Martin Park, and I think you guys approved this at the last council meeting, but they failed to include the labor in there, so we've got a new contract including the labor, the total being two thousand nine hundred eighty-nine dollars and twelve cents.
That'll go on the C.
Put that as C under the...
And that's it, Mark.
What was the original, the original number before they came back and added labor? Do you remember?
The number I was told was that the labor was six hundred dollars.
Oh, I guess.
Or that would be twenty-two...
Yeah, okay.
Or twenty-three eight-nine. Let's see.
Any other questions?
If not, we will take a break.
Twenty minutes?
Twenty-five? Yeah.